Good morning. We're going to start. This hearing is called to order. This is the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole regarding Bills Number 170195, 170196, 170197, and Resolution Number 170213. Mr. Stitt, please read the titles of the bills and resolutions.
Bill Number 170195, in ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2018 through 2023 inclusive. Bill Number 170196, in ordinance to adopt a fiscal 2018 capital budget. Bill Number 170197, in ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2018. Resolution Number 170213, resolution providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2018 through 2022 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2017, which is to be submitted by the mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the mayor on January 3, 1992, Bill Number 1563-A, by and between the city and the authority.
Thank you, Mr. Stitt. Today we continue the public hearing of the Committee of the Whole to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2018, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal 2018 through fiscal Today, we will hear testimony from the following departments: the Chief Administrative Officer, Public Property Procurement, Human Resources, and Fleet Management. Mr. Stitt, the first person to testify is...
It's Christine...
Drum roll?
Darinik Lopez.
Here we go.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, President Clark and members of City Council. I am Christine Darinik Lopez, Chief Administrative Officer. Joining me today are Jackie Litten, Deputy CIO for HR and Talent, and Tim Bisniewski, Deputy CIO, Chief Data Officer. I am pleased to provide testimony on the CIO's fiscal year 2018 operating budget. The proposed fiscal year 2018 general fund budget totals $5,655,653 and an increase of $3,452 over fiscal year 2017 estimated obligation levels. This increase is primarily due to slight budget changes within classes. The CIO's office focuses on modernizing and increasing efficiency and effectiveness to the city to simplify how to do business with the city and improve partnerships with stakeholders. Our office has accomplished a great deal over this last year and will continue through FY18 to make improvements. In July of 2016, the CIO's office implemented electronic signatures for professional services contracts. This process allows city agencies as well as the awarded vendor to sign contracts electronically, alleviating the paper contract being sent back and forth via mail. By the end of April, 10 departments will have successfully launched in the system and the remaining city departments will be onboard by the end of calendar year 2017. The C signature system is saving meaningful time in the contract conformance process. Where we have implemented electronic signatures in the contract process, we have reduced the average processing time by as much as 55 percent. I would like to thank all members of council for supporting the best value legislation that passed through the city process this past December. We are optimistic that the charter change question on best value will be approved by voters in the upcoming May election. Best value will allow the city to evaluate vendors on factors other than price alone, including meeting or exceeding MW DSP goals and how the vendor delivered on time and on budget. We are on the final stages of preparing companion regulations and plan on scheduling meetings with council members. Thank you for your feedback on our need to focus on vendor performance. The CIO's office is working with procurement to purchase a vendor performance module as part of its new e-procurement system. This vendor performance module will help the city manage, evaluate, and track vendors that do business with us. This system is key for efficient and transparent management of city contracts. The city has invested in a learning management system referred to as LMS. The LMS is an electronic platform that provides an efficient way to deliver training and information to city employees. In FY17, HR and Talent launched the platform to all city employees. Citywide training is now available on the LMS and six departments with approximately 6,000 employees have registered to use the system. In FY18, HR and Talent plans to further expand the access to additional departments as well as to create additional training content. This will allow the city to more efficiently provide training to its employees. HR and Talent also developed and distributed hiring and interviewing best practices with the goal of increasing the number of diverse candidates considered for open positions. While civil service positions are filled through a well-defined, rigorous process based on the Home Rule Charter and Civil Service Regulations, departments now have available these best practices to fill their exempted open positions. The Office of Open Data and Digital Transformation launched beta.filla.gov, an effort to reorient the city's website around the needs of its residents, businesses, and other stakeholders. The beta prototype is being built in the open alongside the current filla.gov so that insights from the public can be incorporated through its design, iteration, and development. By the end of FY17, Open Data and Digital Transformation will work with departments across the city to set up landing pages on beta as part of Phase One, to provide each department with a presence on the platform. The second phase will begin in FY18 and allow for the transition of the most important content from existing department websites. In January, Phase Three will begin where there will be a deeper dive into content, user research, and functionality with larger departments to fully transition department websites into a consolidated, user-friendly platform. In addition to Open Data and Digital Transformation, the CIO supports the city's innovation management team as it ensures that our municipal government remains a national leader in the innovation space. By purposely coordinating the concepts of people, place, and process, the Innovation Management Group seeks to increase municipal government's capacity to think and work differently and has created a cross-departmental network of employees trained in the principles of innovation. This concludes my testimony. We are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. First of all, welcome. You are new to government. Can you tell us just how new? The department?
The CIO's office was created last year, and I'm...this is my third month in this role.
That's real new. Are you off probation yet?
I don't think so, but thank you for asking.
Couple of quick questions, and if my former colleague, Bill Green, were here, tell me how we're moving towards a paperless system of government. Give me...let me get my questions in, because...and then you can take them in order that you want. So I want to know about how are we moving paperless? I would like to know about direct deposit efforts, not so much just from some of our receivables, particularly from the state and from the federal government. There was a hearing which I conducted some years ago about a check being on someone's desk for over a year uncashed. If you were around, you will remember that, and I wanted to know from that point to now, have we progressed and hopefully we're making some money? The 200-plus steps it takes to buy a paperclip in procurement, how are you approaching that? And if that includes construction bids, personal...professional services and supplies, services and equipment? And then 3-1-1. So those are my questions. You can take as long as you want to answer them.
Go ahead.
I saw the clock, I knew.
Okay, so I can talk about how...what we're doing to reduce paper. We like paper, right? It just...it's the nature of our business. So I find that in order to truly make change is to be incremental about it, right? So the first bite we took was in procurement. And the e-signatures for professional services contracts, we've essentially with e-Contract Philly and now with the e-signature, we've essentially eliminated paper out of that process. So right now, we have eight departments, there'll be two more going onboard, we're going to have the whole city online by the end of the year, so that's going in the right space, in the right direction. In the procurement department for public works and supplies and equipment, the procurement department has implemented PHL contracts, which is also paperless. And including in that, they have an e-pay component, so you don't even have to send us a check anymore, you can pay the fee online. So that's being implemented, it's going to take time to get all the contracts onboard, but that's going in the right direction.
So is it...is it...I got that, but in the procurement department, are there steps that aren't legally binding to do that don't jeopardize competitive bidding that we can implement so that it doesn't take so long?
So we're making progress. When I first got here, it was about 135 days to do a public works. I think we're down to about 90.
Can you check on that and send it to...
Yep, most definitely.
...the chair and the rest of council?
Happy to.
Those measurements, and if they're moving in the right direction, we really need to know.
I'd be happy to share that. Yep. So we...your finance question, we have not engaged with the finance department because we focused on procurement. The city's budget director has reached out to us and asked us to start engaging in that process, so we'll be looking at that this year. It's...again, we like paper as a government, so it'll be, I think, just an incremental approach, and we'll see what progress we can make throughout the year. So I can't speak to the receivables part yet, we haven't really looked at it. And then the 200 steps, so I know in the professional services, there was 19, we got it down to 17, and like I said, we're kind of DocuSign, we're trying to look at further efficiencies to reduce that. Our goal is to get that to 90 days. It's a stretch goal, but we're optimistic. And 3-1-1, help...
Help you to understand?
Yes.
So we have constituent service workers in my office. We, out of the course of business, we get a complaint, we automatically send it to 3-1-1. There might be a bit of a disconnect between what our belief a closed case is and what their belief a closed case is and the time it takes to close it. You know, we work well with many of the departments, I'm happy with our ability to kind of be on budsman for our constituents, but if they go through the 3-1-1 process, somehow they get frustrated. We're not open on the weekends, you know, I mean, and the time it takes for us to go back, we might find it closed, we might find it still open, it is not necessarily synchronized with 3-1-1, and I would ask you, in your next 100 days, you and Donald Trump, to take a look at 3-1-1.
So I meet with the 3-1 manager on a regular basis, but obviously if there's a technology solution we could supply to make their process more efficient and more reliable, we're happy and very open to being as supportive as we can. I'm happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Well, welcome to your first budget testimony.
Thank you. Thank you.
So let's talk about best value. All right, I'm excited about best value, and you know, I think we've vetted out best value for about a year now...
Yep.
...publicly and in meetings trying to make sure that, you know, the citizens of the City of Philadelphia are getting the best value, taking, you know, other factors, all right, for some of the products and services. So I personally am excited about that, and it's about time that we've had some significant change in our procurement department. So best value will be on the ballot in a few weeks from today, and I know, again, we spent a lot of time with the charter change for the betterment of the citizens. Can you take a moment and remind everybody about best value and the changes that it entails that will give the city yet another tool when it's designing its contracts?
So thank you for asking. Best value, right now, for public works or supplies and equipment, it's lowest responsible bidder, and so that doesn't give us a lot of flexibility to take into consideration other criteria such as vendor performance, how the vendors performed on previous and similar projects for on time, on budget, how they performed on their DVE goals or their EOP goals. Best value is going to kind of afford the city the opportunity to look at that type of criteria, look at things as management team that perhaps somebody is proposing for a public works project right now. When we look at it, but there's no way to weight it, it's just are you deemed responsive and responsible, and then it all comes down to lowest cost. And you know, I find myself asking people when I'm talking about best value, I ask...I look at their phone, and I say to them, "Did you make a decision about your phone based on cost?" And a lot of people say, "Of course not." You know, "I'm an Android lover, I'm an iPhone lover," and that's what best value will bring. It allows us to evaluate other criteria that's important to the city and not necessarily just look at cost.
How do you...how often do you think best value will be used?
So I don't...I think in those situations where the department really has a clearly defined bid spec, I don't think it's appropriate. I think it's probably going to be more appropriate for a sealed bid, but for those situations where you have a very complex, perhaps an IT solution, where there's software, there's implementation, there's also hardware, that's a complex contracting opportunity. If you're building a new terminal at the airport, that's a very complex public works bid opportunity. So I think in those types of situations, we will use it, so I don't think it's going to be...I don't think it'll be the default. I think sealed bids are going to be the default, but at least it's an opportunity for us to put the city in the position to engage in the right contracting opportunity.
Has the office begun the process of developing draft regulations in the event that the measures are passed?
We have been...we've been working on the regulations, and as we committed last fall, we plan on scheduling meetings with council when those regulations are at a point where we feel like we can schedule them. They're still...they're not in the space yet where we feel that it would be worth your time to take a look at them, but that's coming, and we realize we need to do it in the next few weeks, and that's been our goal.
So in your role as CIO, will you be overseeing the procurement process of best value? I know you were lead in, you know, best value all last year. I'm hoping that with your experience, that's carried in this position now.
Yeah, obviously, last year I was able to roll my sleeves up a little more differently, but I have some great members of the team and great members of procurement as well as law and integrity that have...we've really been thoughtful in taking our time to try to get this right, and so I'm overseeing all of it and continue to plan on overseeing it. I want to operationalize it, and I want to learn from this experience so that we can further improve the city's ability to get the right products that we need.
So I've got a question in your new role as CIO. So last year, I just, you know, maybe you were, maybe not, because it wasn't the department that you're in now, and you know, look, I'm a big fan of the responsibility and the mission of the CIO. I mean, I think it really is the backbone that's going to transform our city and its efficiencies and its savings and its effectiveness, you know, down, you know, from best value to program-based budgeting, I think it's all tied together. You know, I'll come back in other rounds here while you're still testifying to talk about legacy programs and what are we doing to, you know, put them in the past, all right, and out to pasture. But last year, in the hearings, there was a lot of conversation about understanding that there are a lot of entrepreneurs that are out there in the tech community who've offered help with the city to be a little more agile, to help solve some of its biggest problems without any financial consideration, just because they feel that they have a lot of value added to, you know, to the business, right? And the private sector can move a little bit quicker and has a lot more flexibility. So when it comes to, you know, all our data and services, have, you know, I know you just, you know, short time there, can you take a look at or start asking around at the department, you know, have we been taking advantage of those offerings that have been out there, right, to show that there's a real connectivity in the tech world and innovation? You know, we've received like 23 national innovation awards, you know, because of having our private sector being a part of government, and I think it really encourages a lot of young entrepreneurs, young and aggressive folks that are in the business that want to help solve some of these complex problems. So the question is, are you aware of any kind of partnership, all right, that the private sector has working with you, and if not, can we revisit that and really kind of bring them into the government fold?
So I am new to tech, that's not my background, but the tech community has been...I'm thrilled to be in it, and the tech community has been overwhelmingly supportive in welcoming into the community. I was at the Civic Engagement Launchpad, there's another event tonight, so I've been having conversations with Code for Philly, super excited about that. Obviously Philly Tech Week, we're all going to participate, and I just have to give a shout out, this is our...a lot of the members here are from our Open Data Digital Transformation team, and they...a lot of them are new from the tech space and want to really engage and do great things for our residents, and so they're here with the city for the right reasons, which I think is amazing.
And you are exactly, all right, the example that's being set for the future of our city, so thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you for choosing the City of Philadelphia, it means a lot, and you know, I can't tell you how much, you know, we're going to be depending on you, so you know, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I am going to defer to Councilman Don. Councilman, I took a little of your tech thunder, but go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
First question I wanted to ask you is, on a scale of zero to 10, with zero meaning we are very low in technology in the city, and 10 being we're the most technologically advanced, where do you place Philadelphia right now?
So I think it depends, right? When I look at this group, I think we're a 10. They're like really cutting edge.
Let me rephrase it. Where do you place Philadelphia government?
So we're probably like a 5.
5?
Yep.
Okay.
From my perspective.
Let me ask you another question. In 1960, the population of Philadelphia is 2 million, government employees 27,993. In 2015, the population of Philadelphia drops by 433,000, government employees 27,765. In most businesses, if they had the same amount of business, they have far less people because they've utilized technology. It doesn't appear from these statistics that we are really utilizing tech in government.
So I think, and back to the...it depends from my perspective. I think for those roles where there's a lot of customer-facing interaction, I think of social workers, I think of our uniform personnel, I'm not sure if there's a technology solution that would give the city the benefit it's looking for, but where...but we are looking for efficiencies and where we can find them, we're introducing it. That doesn't mean that the jobs are going away, it just means that people are working smarter, and it gives that role, that individual, the opportunity to grow their work, if you will.
Well, let me give you a couple of examples, and maybe you could...I've said this last year, I'm not sure how much progress we've made, and hopefully we've made progress. Last year, I think it was the controller that identified a problem in the mailroom, so I took it toward the mailroom, and I saw what was going on. I saw it from a different perspective. I see that we mail out 576,000 real estate tax bills through the mail, and we mail out monthly water and sewer bills, and we mail out probably 7 million or 8 million pieces of mail that could be automated. Not everyone can do it, but maybe 75 percent of the population could get bills on their phones or whatever, and pay by phone, whatever. What are we doing in that light? Because that's about when you had the postage up and the labor, it's 5, 6 million dollars. What are we doing to implement that?
So I'm going to ask Charlie Brennan, our IT director, to come up and talk about some of the projects to look at these types of...
While he's coming up, I want to keep my time productive.
Okay.
The other question I had for you is, if you looked, and this is...this is not going to be easy, because I believe from my perspective, and I'm new, that we have 50 to 60 years of Band-Aids on every department, and we've never gutted the system and started from scratch, which we need to do, which most people don't want to do because everyone's protecting jobs. But if we looked at certain departments and said, "What's the goal of the department? How do we use technology to achieve the goal, and then how do we build a model to accomplish the goal?" Have you looked at like maybe two or three areas in that light?
So our focus thus far has been procurement, obviously. So we're continuing to look at mainly processes. I mean, the processes are so paper-intensive and so dated, that's really been our focus about how to get rid of the paper and how...I mean, there are people still physically walking paper from 1515...
I understand, and I understand DocuSign was a big help, but that's, again, a Band-Aid. What I'm talking about is looking a fresh look. It's almost like what you do in zero-based budgeting, a fresh look.
Right.
The part...they can't do the whole system, but you can pick two or three areas and say, "Okay, if this is the goal, this is the mission of this department, how do I accomplish this mission with today's technology, and how do I build that model?"
So the other initiative I want to mention is obviously program-based budget is going to help us identify where the opportunities are, and the CIO's office and the budget offices and the managing director's office are all working together to identify where to focus and how best to move this forward. I just think it's going to take time.
Let me tell you why it's so important. Your department has 3.9 roughly...3.9 million, I think it is, of labor. It really costs the city 7.5 million, 87 percent fringe benefits. On top of that, the finance department tells us there's 37 percent of overhead of city costs. So I'm going to go back to what I've said in prior times, when you pay somebody $100,000 in salary, it's 224 with the benefits and the city overhead. And that's the piece where technology has to help us, because you can't keep...this labor is going to choke the city, choke us. That's why we're having pension issues, that's why we're having all these problems. We need to embrace technology way more than what we're...you know, if you wanted my opinion, I was at, you know, Tim, you were there, I was at South by Southwest, and they went to that...they had a mayor's technology area, which I thought was some pretty impressive technology being done there. I don't think, in my world, if you said to me compared to other cities, 0 to 10, I think we're 1 or 2. I don't think we're 5, I think we're 1 or 2. I think we have so much more to grow. We're just putting in DocuSign last year, that's like we went from a horse and buggy to a Model T. I mean, companies have been using DocuSign for years already. So I think my point is that in order for us to be healthy, we need much more technology implemented into the system. I think Charlie wanted to answer one of the questions, though.
Hi, I'm Charlie Brennan, I'm the CIO. Councilman, on the one issue that I know is near and dear to your heart here, the RFP for e-pay and e-billing is issued today, it's on the website.
Great, I love that.
So, and as far as your other comments, I...you know, I would kind of give us a 6. I haven't seen a big cities, you know, and the problem isn't always money, believe it or not, the problem is our ability to manage all these things. You know, we just put a list of all our projects together that we have, and it's just under 100 different projects that we're managing. And some of these things, some of these systems, I know you've heard this, they're so old and so complex that we really struggle with even figuring out how they work. Like, a lot of people don't even know where this...where some of these systems are getting their information from. So we've just actually gone through a capital project, you know, a project list here, where we reached out to all the operating departments and said, you know, "What systems, you know, are the oldest?" And we actually knew them ahead of time, but we wanted to get some input. And some of these systems that we have coming up replaced, they are literally 30 years old that we have to replace them. So I agree with your assessment that technology would make us better, and I think some of these systems will help to do that, but the process to get there, as you know now from being a councilman, is not easy. The process from when we start an RFP to when we get to contract could be over 18 months. And when you handle too many of these projects at once, it just becomes extremely difficult for us to manage them internally. So I agree with some of your sentiments, but we are under the burden of a lot of rules and regulations that the city has.
But one of your jobs in your department is to modernize the efficiency and effectiveness of services, so if you see things are taking too long, you need to come back to us and say, "How do we streamline this and how do we make it more efficient?"
Yes, yes. And exactly, you know, it's funny you mention that because Christine and I have a meeting, I think it's next week, and we got everybody together, actually, law, procurement, us, to try to figure out like, is there a better way to procure technology than we're procuring it now? Because the RFP process and then the contracting process and all that, really, it's the same way we've been buying software for literally 40 years. We've been doing the same thing. So, and that process really, to me, is more geared to custom-made solutions, it is not geared to packaged products, which you and I have talked about before, that's... That's where we should be moving. So, you know, I reached out to Christine, she's been very supportive in trying to figure out, can we do this a better way and cut the time from 18 months to two years down to something more manageable?
Right. Do you know the timing, by the way, on the RFP that you just mentioned?
I'm sorry?
The timing on that RFP?
It's, the responses are due back, I think it's like the third week of June or so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good up there. Hey, Christine, how you doing?
Hey, how are you, Councilman? How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you, too.
My good friend from Philadelphia International Airport.
Yes, sir.
Fine, outstanding public servant. I just want to go over a couple of things regarding how we contract with our transcription contract and transparency and accessibility of transcripts from hearings. Right now, currently, the contract with the transcription company charges fees for transcripts with a variety of different agencies, such as zoning board of adjustments, LNI, I have a couple up here, Commission of Human Relations, Fair Housing Commission, and five other city entities. And we've been having concerns and complaints from constituents who say, "Councilman, I may not be able to make a hearing, but I don't have the fee either to pay to get a copy of transcripts, but I would still like to be involved in the process." And so, one, my question is, how do we address that? Because we don't want people, just based upon their financial income, not to be able to really have transparency to our actual government process. And also, to give you an example, in front of the ZBA, Zoning Board of Adjustment, the Court, Common Court, the Court of Common Pleas can waive an individual fees when they file an appeal against a zoning ruling that they may not be in favor of. And that's normally a neighborhood community group that don't have money to compete against a big-time lawyer representing a developer. That fee can be waived, but the transcription fees on the city side can't be waived. So is there something that we can do to address it?
Councilman, I'm not familiar with it, but I'm going to ask T. David Williams if he can come up and...
The procurement commissioner, Ms. Morgan.
I just want to be clear, I want to clarify one part of my question. An RCO group can get a transcript, but individuals can't.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Trevor Day, procurement commissioner. I can't answer the specifics to your question, but I would be more than willing to look at the issue. You know, it is put out, the specifications to the contract is put out in conversation with the departments. And so if there's a need to add a cost or a copy to the public, I think that's maybe possible to do. It may also be possible for the department to pay for the copy and then charge the public a fee, you know.
So here's what I would like to recommend, and I'll have my staff do the follow-up. For those various boards and commissions that we do, that we actually contract with, I would like to recommend that for individuals who are indigent, come from a poor backgrounds, particularly individuals not RCO organizations, that they should have the same rights that we do in city council, and information should be provided free. Because we don't want to be in a predicament where, again, just because a person is poor, don't have the type of money that individuals they normally competing with, and a lot of times developers, or their lawyers, or just the average person who just want to know, maybe it's a historical ruling that's going to take place regarding one of the buildings, and they need transcripts, and don't have the money to get those transcripts, they should have the opportunity to receive a free copy.
Sure.
I think that would be a small price to pay for transparency and accessibility.
So, Councilman, yeah, we'll look into it, and then we'll follow back up with your office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you. Thanks, Trevor.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, real quick question. What is it? Is it, what is the Program 360, something 360?
Office 360.
Office 360.
Okay.
Do we have that?
So I'm going to ask Charlie Brennan, who is very passionate about that particular topic, to come up and talk about it.
And the reason I ask that is because many times we find ourselves doing documents on programs that people have so long ago discarded that we have to convert it into a document that is a little more recent. If we're talking about efficiency, you know, that's a real low-hanging fruit that we can grab and move forward. Tell me your view. I told you I was going to get you up there.
Yes, you did. I'm Charlie Brennan. I'm the CIO. We actually started to install Office 365 in council about a month ago, but we backed off because it was too disruptive during budget hearings. So we're going to wait till budget hearings are over. And I'm glad you asked the question, because it really goes to something Councilman Don really brought up, is right now we've got about 23,000 copies of Office. And Office, believe it or not, is the one product everybody uses. We all use it. All your staffers use it, you use it, you use it for email. 23,000 other city employees use it. But to be honest with you, it's, the versions are all over the place. And as you said, some of the older versions, you know, won't work with some of the newer stuff. So we're going to convert the entire city to Office 365, which will, for the first time in the history of the city, put us all on the same platform. So as far as a productivity tool, it really is a tremendous productivity tool. You'll be able to have virtually, I've been to some councils' offices where they, you know, complain about your inability to store documents. You'll be able to store virtually unlimited documents. You'll be able to have a document, every document you ever created, at your fingertips, on your phone. So we're going to wait till after budget's over, we're going to hit council, install it in all your offices, and you should be, but, you know, after you come back, it should all be up and working. So we're working with the council president's office on that now.
Reason, one of the, one of the reasons is, in today's technology, you can save money by not traveling, by using FaceTime on regular cellphones, but under the Office 365, you can do it on desktops, which allows virtual meetings, not just within government, but within government at the state level or at the federal level. And instead of having to do that trip, which I love, beautiful downtown Harrisburg, but if I can avoid going up and down that turnpike and put people in a situation where I can actually see them, and it's, you know, we can do it with telephone conference call, it's not the same viewing a presentation, it is not the same watching reaction of other people, and it allows us to operate more efficiently, less paper, and less travel time. So I'm glad to hear that we're going to do that.
Yeah, Councilman, it'll actually let you do face-to-face meetings. And I forgot the most important thing about the installation of this in council. All this is coming out of my budget, not yours.
Well, on that note, you can't get better than a home run, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to let it go.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few more questions I wanted to ask. The technology sector is so important in Philadelphia, and I'm going to talk about it in the private sector and in the public sector. In the private sector, you probably are aware that the economic multiplier of jobs for tech is 5 to 1.
Mm-hmm.
For every job you create in tech, it would create five more jobs. At the port, it's 1.6, just to give you some comparison. So we have 14,000 tech jobs today. We have, you know, we have tremendous tech communities in Philadelphia that are building, building, and most of the people, I would say, are under 40 or under 35 or some even under 30. And then I see OIT, and I see you have a lot of talented young people in your department. And if I was in your shoes and running your department, I would create a task force of these young people and say, how do we make the city of Philadelphia way better than it is today? And get their ideas. They are the brains of tech. I would not be the brains of tech. I wasn't brought up on it. I'm being totally honest. So if there's some way of you're forming a task force within, I'd have Tim in charge of it, and I would gather all these younger people and get them to say, how do we want our city to look in the next five or 10 years? That should be a goal we should try to accomplish, because they are the future and they know what's important.
I agree. Thank you. Yep.
Would you be willing to form that kind of a task force?
So I meet with all of, everyone in the CEO's office. So as I mentioned, all of the Open Data Digital Transformation Team is here, and then also we have staff in Charlie's team, OIT. So I have, I have to get, I have to spend more time over there, but I'm with the Open Data Digital Transformation at least once a quarter, at least. So...
Well, I'm sorry, I let them drive, to a large degree, what we need. And I went to that South by Southwest. I was the oldest one there, probably by 25 or 30 years, okay?
Yeah.
And everyone there is young.
Sure.
And they're the ones driving this equation today.
Yep.
And so we need to embrace them and get them involved.
I think that's a great idea, Councilman. Tim Wisnewski, chief data officer, thanks for raising that and for your kind words. I think one of the best parts about trying to do something like that in Philadelphia is that we don't have to do it ourselves. City government doesn't have to be, even the primary pusher of that, there's groups out there like coded by kids, and I think we're going to see a ton of examples in the next couple of weeks during Philly Tech Week, of folks who think the same exact way, who are trying to do things like that. In fact, on Friday, there's a breakfast of leaders in the tech community, and Eliza Pollack from our Innovation Management Office is going out, and that's one of the things they're going to be talking about, is how do we build on the strength that we have in Philadelphia and support it from our various networks?
But I guess what I'm curious to know is from our younger people in tech, how could we make our government more efficient, more technology-oriented? How do we look at the next 10 or 15 or 20 years, and where do we want to be? They have the vision, they understand the technology way better than people of my age, okay? And we should embrace them. And I would like to see that task force formed and get their ideas. That's how, that's how you become great, when you go to younger people who have great ideas, and great things happen. Anyway, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to follow a couple of questions. Some of these questions may have been addressed a little bit earlier when I was tied up with a gas commission hearing that I was chairing this morning. Wanted to touch base with efforts regarding best value. I know that initiative will be on the ballot in next month, but I'm curious, in reference to assuming that that ballot initiative is passed, what are the next steps regarding best value, regarding rollout, and as well as informing vendors and others regarding this new initiative from the city?
Thank you, Councilman. Right now, we're in the process of getting the regulations and guidelines in a place where we can share them and get feedback from council members and other groups that we're still thinking through. Assuming we get that feedback, we're going to post the regulations, we'll go through the formal process of posting them in the Department of Records for 30 days. If anyone requests a hearing, we'll host a hearing. And then it's a matter of starting to operationalize it. But I do think the regulations and the guidelines, we want to be thoughtful, and we want to make sure we get feedback, because our goal is to do it right. And so that is really the next step. Oh, and then as far as sending information to vendors, the procurement commissioner will be sending a letter advising firms of the new 171400 regulations, because we think that's important information for them to have. But obviously, we didn't want to do that until after, that we optimistically hope that best value passes and is approved by the voters.
And do you plan any type of outreach activities with various entities? If, assuming that the legislation is passed and voted upon by the electors of the city on May 16th, do you anticipate any, and I know you're drafting the regulations, you're getting comment, but do you anticipate any type of communication process to people throughout the city of Philadelphia? And broader, what is best value, so you can get more and more vendors aware of the dynamics and changes with best value will be that may impact them from a business standpoint or during business with a city perspective?
Yes, we, probably next week, we're going to start sending some information out. Obviously, we wanted to provide council members with some information, should you receive any inquiries from your constituents. We're also going to send some information out to the chambers. We're speaking with some media outlets just to help educate folks what best value is and why it's important to the city. And obviously, we're working with OEO as well as procurement, and the community engagement team with the city to make sure we can do as much education, educating as possible.
Yeah, I would also suggest that, you know, we have MedWeek in the fall, and a number of other organizations have business engagement or discussion events throughout the year. But I would suggest probably in the fall, you know, having some type of activity during the MedWeek process, as well as reaching out and doing some type of joint forums with the various chambers, not only the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce, but also all the other ethnic chambers, to really kind of give a real perspective, what is best value, what is not, to really educate people. I think given the summer as a time to, you know, work on the regulations and drafting, but in preparation for the fall, and going through the fall, having a real engaged outreach to various businesses, so people can get a full understanding of what is best value.
That's a great suggestion. MedWeek's a great suggestion, as well as the others. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. When the Office of CIO was created, the intent was to increase the efficiency of our government, right? And that, we're trying to integrate departments, intergovernmental cooperation, you know, when it comes to technology, break it down, the, a lot of the divides, including digital divide or silo operations, legacy programs, and working in conjunction with OIT. So efficiency was, of our government was a priority. And we're over a year into that being addressed. If you were to make a statement on what would be the top five changes and priorities for the Office of CIO, and how can city council continue to help meet those goals and priorities for a more efficient, a more open, a more transparent, and a more engaged communication with our, with our communities?
So I think the focus has been to look at the work and identify where there's opportunities to create efficiency. So obviously, we started in contracting. I think, considering I'm, it was three months this past weekend I've been in this role, so I...
But you have a good team.
Yeah, I have a great team. I have an awesome team. I'm very fortunate. So I think once, you know, I get my feet under me, so to speak, it's really focusing on what is next for us, right? So this year feels a lot of operationalizing. Last year was the building the strategy, and so this year is getting electronic signatures up. It's operationalizing best value. It's implementing the vendor performance. We've never looked at vendor performance from a centralized procurement department. That will be a new process for us and a change that we'll have to lead through across the government. And then continuing to look back on the, you know, the RFP process to find additional efficiencies. The, obviously, now that I'm in the tech space, there's a ton of opportunity there. What Tim's team is doing with our digital front door with beta and eventually changing philadelphia.gov is, I think, really exciting for Philadelphia. And I think changing the way residents engage with their government, and it's, it's not, you don't have to be clairvoyant to figure out how to find which process. I think that's something that will be really exciting for us to do.
Well, Tim can handle it, for sure. And that is, I mean, the face of, that's your first, you know, some people's first contact and interaction with government, right? Is what you put out there on a front end. You know, obviously, we need to back-end the work, right? And that's the systems, and some of the things that you're, I guess, implementing this year from your strategy.
Yep.
So this year, we'll just, you know, continue to move forward with effectuating the long-term strategy plans for our capital investments, is, would that be correct? Is that fair to say?
With the contracting, then I think it's moving into the tech space, you know? So we have a capital request for the full beta, moving beta to philadelphia.gov. So, I mean, it's going to get really exciting, and Tim has a lot of plans about engaging the community to really deliver something... the community to really deliver something that I think the city deserves as far as a virtual front door. And then in Charlie's space and our OIT, I think it's starting to begin the process of addressing the legacy systems.
And there's a continuity between your office with OIT.
There is, there is a big time continuity between our offices.
Especially when it comes to scheduling and unveiling and launching, it's all in concert with the same timetable?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Tim Wisnewski, Chief Data Officer. Yeah, so in particular, when we, when we change URL, sometimes the management, the existing website might be over at OIT, so we coordinate with them about changing URLs over. We have pretty regular meetings, both on the digital side and also on the open data side, because they have a great data shop there, the GIS group that we collaborate really closely with, so.
We love maps here in the city.
Yes, that's right.
We love maps. So last year, there was a note in your, in your budget testimony that would be an annual citizen survey related to city services and customer service. Have these services or surveys been conducted yet? And if so, what are the type of results have we been seeing?
So I'm going to ask Angelina Ruffin to come up and speak to the survey.
And do you have, I mean, while she approaches, will there be a process that incorporates the feedback into directly into the departments?
From, from the survey?
The result from the surveys, yeah.
For the survey you're talking about, right?
So, one, all right, I'm asking about the surveys.
Okay.
And what you're, you know, if they've been coming back, what you've been seeing? And two, is there a process in which, you know, it's going to, the feedback is going to be filtered, you know, back to the departments for, you know, for its efficiency and changes that may be needed in the device?
Good morning. My name's Angelina Ruffin. I'm the Director of Performance Management for the city. So yes, we did conduct the resident survey, just concluded in February, February 15th. We're expecting preliminary results back at the end of this week. So we are going to be putting out a report to the public on what the residents think are important for us to improve on. Based on that, of course, we're going to be looking at what are the most important areas for improvement, looking at each service and what they're identifying by the departments and conveying that information back to the departments. And then I'm going to be working with the departments to try to address some of those issues.
That's great. What's the process, if you don't mind, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but, you know, we're going through our budget process here, and I think it's, that feedback is important for us, you know, as legislators and policymakers and going through the budget that, you know, some of that feedback will be important, I think, through this process and what we can fight for just coming, you know, as the citizens are giving us, you know, their direct line feedback, aside what we get every single day, you know, throughout the day and on weekends. So is there going to be a process where council will be informed before all that information is released?
We can definitely discuss us doing a briefing with council before the-
If you can.
Absolutely.
You get back and talk to the administration about, you know, on the timing of release, if it's going to be this week and if you have it in, you know, whatever format it is, that this legislative body is informed in advance, you know, while the, with the intent of, you know, trying to address some of the issues that may arise as a result of these surveys through the budget process.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll be getting the preliminary results back this week, so we'll take a look at those. And then as we do more analysis, we'll definitely, before we put out the report, try to connect with you. We are really excited. We've actually got over 9,000 residents to complete the survey. This is the biggest number of respondents that any city that has conducted a resident survey has done in the past two years. So we're really excited to hear what our residents have to say.
Yeah, I think that's-
So it's going to be great.
That's fantastic. I mean, we're excited as well, especially on the preliminary results. You know, at a 9,000, just out of curiosity, would you know hard copy, electronic, what was the majority of the surveys? How were they conducted?
I'm not sure on the exact numbers. I know that we did do an effort to try to increase the number of minority participation across the city. So we did do a number of paper surveys. We also did electronically. We also were able to take it by an app. So I can definitely get that information for you.
I took them out in my community, you know, hard copy also promoted, you know, just from city's website, you know, electronically. I'm just curious, you know, just as an observation, you know, which way was a better communicative, you know, method to reach the citizens of City of Philadelphia, that's one.
I think we have to use all methods, honestly, because different communities respond to different things. So, you know, definitely, we're trying to get representation from lower income individuals in the city, you know, who may not have access to computers or, and that kind of stuff. It's definitely better to get the word out through, you know, having them be, have the opportunity to complete it in paper, hard copy at a library or wherever else. So I can definitely get you the details as to what the breakdown was in terms of respondents by the different modes that we administered it.
Well, thank you, and great job. Appreciate your time here. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson, or, excuse me, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brown.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Trying to find my questions here. How long have you been in your current position?
Three months.
90 days old.
Yes, ma'am.
You have a lot to get your arms around.
I do.
With members of your team. And first, let me underscore Councilman Green's recommendation. I would ask that you take that under serious consideration.
Yep.
Because during Med Week is the opportune time, given the issue, to educate, inform, and enlighten the world about this new measure. It's high up on the radar screen of MBE and WBEs, and that's the time to seize the moment to talk about this new, this new measure.
Yeah, thank you. We participate in a Med Week, and we always, at the airport when I was there, we participated in Med Week. So count us in, we'll be there for sure.
Okay. But to educate folks on this new measure?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. In your vendor performance system, are you going to be looking at MBE/WBE performance as well?
Yes, we're going to be looking at, for Public Works, how vendors delivered on time, on budget, but also on their DB goals as well as EOP goals.
Okay. And when do you anticipate, knowing that this is new, the first opportunity for you to measure and report out a year or an 18-months' worth of findings?
So we're going through the process to procure the vendor performance module, and what we like to do, our goal is to have it operational for our first best value, assuming it passes by, the voters pass it. We'd like to have it operational for the first contracting opportunity for best value. That's our, that's our goal.
So then you would be prepared to report back to council during the next budget season what the yield has been? Is that fair to say?
I think that's fair. Yep.
Okay, all right. A number of us, including me, pay a lot of attention to pay equity, and I've stated in other, with other departments, that our government should not be guilty of pay equity. So my office pays particular attention to the salaries of staff across gender and across race. And so on page three and page nine, help me understand the substantial difference between the minority professionals and the non-African-American professionals.
So the page three indicates our new hires. So, so the African-American employee is a hearing officer. The Hispanic is my administrative executive assistant.
Mm-hmm.
Who worked for me at the airport, and she's coming back. And then the white employees are, two are members on the Open Data Digital Transformation, and one is going to be an analyst, working in our transformation team, our project team.
So is that to suggest it has more to do with duty and responsibility versus, and that sort of drives the salary?
Yes, so the hearing officers have a very set salary. There's a junior position and a senior position, and they're all paid the same.
Okay.
So that's the majority. And then in the Open Data Digital Transformation, there's a lot of developers, there's design, there's content strategist, and so the pay is-
Commensurate with?
With the marketplace. We try to be as competitive as possible.
Of course. On page nine?
So our, as far as compensation, the hearing officers, so our staff at BA and OAR, are pretty much, everybody makes the same amount depending on the job.
Mm-hmm.
In Open Data Digital Transformation, that's where the compensation varies, and a lot of that is marketplace-driven, experience, and the job. So a developer, what does that pay? A content strategist, what does that pay? And so that's how we look at that.
Experience, experience as determined by whom?
Well, it would be doing that work. So if you were a developer for 10 years versus a developer for two, your ability to deliver-
Got it.
Is going to look different, so we want to make sure we acknowledge that.
Okay. What is, what is the philosophy of your department when it comes to this, now finally getting national attention, the issue of pay equity?
So obviously, as a woman, I support it fully. I think for us, where we see the opportunity for, to increase diversity is in our Open Data Digital Transformation. And so, because that is where the higher salaries are, given the work that those folks do.
I see.
So what we've been doing, and what Tim's been doing, is in the tech space, it's about going to meetups. So there's some-
It's about, it's about going to meetups.
Meetups.
I know what that is.
Yep. So Tim's been spending a lot of his time, and I'm going to let Tim speak, he's been going to meetups such as the Item, and he's spoken, and there's been several more. And then Jackie, who is leading our recruitment effort, Jackie's been focusing on hiring practices, which we've been following to the, you know, which has been incredibly helpful, but also Jackie's given us some strategies on targeted recruitment efforts.
So let's talk about that.
Yep.
Because we discovered with the airport where they, not the airport, forgive me, the police department is having similar challenges as well, and is doing budget hearings where we learn where those challenges are, and we can be helpful and useful in pointing you in a direction to face those challenges head-on, thus improve the numbers. So just speak briefly for the time we have left, what your targeted recruitment strategies are, then I'd love to hear from you, sir.
So, good morning. I'm Jackie Linton. I'm deputy CIO for the Human Resources and Talent Unit. And one of the things that we've been focusing on is creating some hiring best practices. That includes both interviewing as well as sourcing candidates. And we actually, so, I mean, we post jobs on websites like Monster, Indeed, LinkedIn, places where all kinds of people are likely to see them.
Sure.
And in addition to that, we also go to career fairs that are specifically focused on, you know, different nationalities or different groups. For instance, the, we just went to the ALDEA, ALDEA conference, and we're also hosting our second citywide career fair, and it's going to be at, at the Convention Center this year. And it's, we hope it'll be much bigger than last year. And our goal there is to, you know, open it up to the public. We'll post things all over the city, you know, city council actually helped us with that last year.
Great.
So that we can make available the jobs that are available and those that will be coming up.
Sure.
So those are some of the things that we're doing to really kind of get the word out about our jobs to anyone who would want to apply.
Okay. So what I would add to that is there are a number of, there are gazillion professional associations of college-educated African-American professionals who yearn for this type of information so that they can share that amongst their membership.
That's right.
They, finding a way to include them in a loop of information would be very, very useful.
So one of the things that we're focusing on, on going forward, is really, most of those you have to pay for, is deciding which ones of those we want to connect with and actually doing just that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I hear from you two, please, sir, before?
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Tim Wisnewski, Chief Data Officer. So diversity is really important to our office because despite us having the label as like a tech and design thing, like the bulk of our work is actually in the empathy part. And we believe that having a diverse team increases our overall capacity for empathy.
Research also shows that, too.
Thank you, yeah. So we've had five hiring opportunities developed in the last few months, and we saw that as a huge opportunity to increase the diversity of our team. And the way we went about it is by improving the steps of our hiring process. So we really dissected it. It's like a rabbit hole, I got to be honest with you. Everything from improving the way we write job descriptions, taking a lot of the recommendations from the Office of HR and Talent, to the outreach, reaching out to 14 different organizations, some of them like really industry-specific, and other ones like the various chambers of commerce in the city.
Sure.
But also like blind screening of resumes, the interview structure that we have, and coming up with evaluation criteria ahead of time, and actually evaluating before we talk to one another and like avoiding groupthink, that kind of thing. The last thing we want to do is actually like survey some of the candidates that we have. I'm really interested in that. And the goal really is to create a hiring process that is consistent, objective, welcoming, and inclusive regardless of a candidate's race, ethnicity, age, ability, or sexual orientation. So we still, we've filled two positions so far. We have, basically, we're thinking of it like there's another round left of hiring. So we're actually going to take the learnings that we got from the first round and try to apply into the next round, sort of iterate on it like we do with software. So we're really excited about that opportunity.
Well, I must tell you that your authenticity comes through as a team.
Thank you.
And it's quite encouraging. And if we could take that across government, we'd be a stronger city. So thank you for your leadership, all three of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Now that we have a quorum, we have to handle some of our budget process here. I'd like to note that one item for the record, I want to offer amendment to the capital program and capital budget that require no vote of this body today. One amendment increases funding with the Commerce Department for the Schuylkill River Waterfront in the following amounts and years FY '18, $2 million FY '19, $1 million, and $250,000 per year for FY '20 through FY '23. These funds are intended to foster further development of the Schuylkill River Trail by financing key components that are not fully funded in the capital project, capital program as submitted. Second Amendment adds $1 million to the Finance Department for each year of the capital program for the purposes of increasing city councils' available funding for improvements to existing facilities, otherwise known as ITF funding. This funding is used to support critically needed renovations and other improvements to city-owned facilities. The reasons why these amendments are being offered today at this time is that the Philadelphia Home Rule Charter spells out the requirements for any changes that are be able to be made to the capital program. Before council can enact an amendment to the capital program other than an amendment to delete a project, we must first request through the mayor and recommendations from the City Planning Commission. The commission has 30 days in which to respond which its recommendations are. So we wanted to start the clock and introduce any amendment now. Do all the members have, do all the members have copies of these proposed amendments?
Yes.
Yes, all right, very well. Councilmember Reynolds Brown will offer these amendments on behalf of Council President. I will not be requesting a vote on the amendments. It is my intent to get these amendments in and on the record. We will now briefly recess our public hearing and go into our public meeting for the purpose of introducing these amendments into the official record. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I offer proposed amendments to bill numbers 170195 and 170196 and request that no vote be taken on them at this time.
Thank you. We'll see that the stenographer receives a copy of the amendment so that they may be made part of the record. We will now go back to our public hearing. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Green, Christine, I want to go back to the process of vending and vendors and contracts. And so since I've been in council, one of the key complaints and or issues or concerns that will come from small businesses that do work with the City of Philadelphia is the average time or lack of the city pays vendors and subcontractors their pay. And so, one, I want to ask, do you know the average timeframe? Two, what's the process of monitoring how the city pays their contractors and subcontractors? And three, what are we going to do to take steps moving forward to address this issue?
So last year, we looked, we looked at slow pay, and we really did a lot of analytics about why. And what, it was the genesis for E-signature and RFPs, quite frankly. What we realized is that departments with an RFP perhaps would take the opportunity to amend a contract. So it's, you have a contract, you have the right to extend it for a year, amend it, and then have the vendor work, but we weren't able to pay them until it was amended or, you know, fully, fully conformed. And so that was- And so, that was, at one point, 135 days. So, that's a lot to ask for a prime. And then, you're talking about their subs, which tend to be local, small, MWDSBs. It was a challenge, which is why we implemented the electronic signature for RFPs. So, what we did this year is, we have eight departments. The first department we brought onboard was OIT. So, we took a deep dive into some of OIT's amendments, and we're seeing improvements of 25 to 50%. So, once a contract's been conformed, there's no reason not to pay an invoice. So, the fact that, so we're, that's how we're addressing it. I don't, I, you know, again, we don't have the full city onboard until the end of the year, so this is going to take a little time to get there. But we think this is how we're going to be able to get there. And then, obviously, in procurement, implementing their electronic, their PHL contracts, that will also expedite the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few more questions, is what I ask. In your budget, it said, in the Office of Administrative Review Program, there are five board members getting paid $45,000 each. Can you explain their roles?
So, I'll ask Paula Weiss to come up.
I'm Paula Weiss, Executive Director of the Office of Administrative Review. The five board members that you're talking about are members of the Tax Review Board. There are five members appointed by the mayor. They're actually paid $10,000, they're paid $100 per meeting that they attend to a ceiling of $10,000 a year. So, actually, that $45,000 is for five board members for an entire year's work. They meet twice a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays at 2:00. And their jurisdiction is very broad. They hear appeals by taxpayers for almost every bill or claim collectible by the Department of Revenue. So, they hear, they provide administrative appeals for everything from a taxpayer questioning a $50 water bill to a multimillion-dollar audit assessment by the Department of Revenue.
Okay. Thank you. And then, another question is, is the sweep and alarm a collection service run by Xerox?
It's not, it's a full-service database system and collection opportunity that currently it's, it was Xerox state and local solutions. It is now Conduent state and local solutions. They were spun off by Xerox in the last six to eight months. They provide the database on which all of our alarm registrations, false alarm finds, code violation notices reside and are processed. And then, they provide consulting services for the enforcement and collection as well as administrative review process.
So, we pay them 1.255 million for the service. 1.255 million. How much in fees did we get from that?
We, we collected, in total, approximately $10 million.
Okay. That's good, then. I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the weeks of the rebuild discussion, there's been comments that I've made, others which probably have made regarding how we can provide additional opportunities to businesses of color in the city of Philadelphia as part of the rebuild initiative. One, when doing that, considering we're looking at renovating our parks, recreation centers, and libraries, is unbundling some of these contracts and putting them in smaller contract forms to make it easier for smaller contractors to participate in the procurement process. From a city perspective and looking at contracts beyond rebuild, I've had some conversations, I think with people in your department, also with procurement commissioner. What steps would it take to start the discussion regarding unbundling contracts for city contracts, to put those contracts in a smaller form? I know you've been working through the e-procurement process as well as best value, but going forward, what steps would it take to take on that initiative? And that's a question for Chief Administrative Officer as well as the procurement commissioner.
So, I think with best value, and obviously, in the procurement department, it, it, because it's in a centralized department, it's somewhat more efficient, if you will, for us to gauge at the departments. I think, once we launch best value, we're going to be more intimately involved in understanding what the contract opportunity is. And so, I think it's going to be natural and very organic for us to talk about, well, where are the opportunities to debundle, quite frankly? So, I'm, I see it as a greater opportunity to have those, because it creates a dialogue for those conversations. In the RFP process, and, and then, the other thing I should mention is, we're, we're looking at best value as an opportunity to learn, and then, how can we incorporate those learnings into other contracting processes such as RFPs? So, that, that's how I'm, I'm looking at it and approaching it. I don't know if Trevor wants to come up and talk about the procurement department. You mentioned the commissioner.
So, we do an analysis-
Trevor, can you state your name for the record?
Yes, yeah. Sorry. Trevor Day, Procurement Commissioner. We do an analysis on a, a regular basis on the size of our contracts, the, the contracts that we bundle, the, the contracts that we debundle. And, you know, we can send this information to you. You know, on the services, supplies, and equipment, 80, you know, somewhere between 70 to 80% of our contracts are below the $250,000 contract level, which is pretty small in comparison to the, the, the contracts that we solicit, you know, citywide. I mean, we can have multimillion-dollar contracts. You know, if there's a, an opportunity to debundle, we're having, we're trying to have that conversation. We're trying to identify areas that, you know, could, could be parts to part, you know, that would be able to be award, award contracts locally, award contracts to, to women, minority-owned firms. We're having a discussion with Iowa about, you know, sort of building a pipeline of making those opportunities more available. So, we're having those, those, those conversations now, and we're continuing to assess that on, on a regular basis.
Has there been any conversation, or have you had any outreach to any peer cities that have made a done unbundling of contract, to see what steps they've taken in that regard?
We haven't done that too much, and we probably could. I mean, that may be something that we can partner with the CIO on doing. We've done that on best value, and we've made a lot of connections, you know, and we can definitely include that in, in what we do.
Yeah. Considering that, you know, in best value, I know you reach out to other peer cities, I think that's something that could be an inquiry to those other cities and their procurement departments, if they've taken a process of unbundling contracts and taking contracts and making them a smaller amount, what steps they have taken in that regard. So, I'd be curious to see that information. One final point, I, I know as we're moving forward this best value initiative, PGW also mirrors a lot of the initiatives that the city takes on in various ways. We also have a very seasoned procurement process. When we had our retreat earlier this year with PFMCC, we discussed taking on initiative of updating our procurement process at PGW. And so, that's one thing I'll be looking for assistance of procurement and administration on how we can look at how we refine and improve our procurement process, especially as a way of making and providing better opportunities for better vendors, as well as providing better opportunities for businesses, local-based businesses, and businesses run by people of color in the city of Philadelphia.
We'd be happy to. I mean, we have a lot of best practices research that we'd be more than happy to share.
Yeah. If you could provide that information, that would be very helpful.
Happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple more questions, I'll let you guys go. Who negotiates contracts in your department and these other departments that you supervise?
So, the department heads would negotiate their contracts. The CIO's office, we have essentially one contract, which is Paula Weiss, and so, she negotiates that contract.
Is there somebody, I'm just trying to understand, is there somebody from the city that is in charge of negotiation that can give you the tools on how to negotiate?
So, there is not. Obviously, with best value, it's going to be an opportunity because that's a change, and we are looking at doing, designing an educational component, and, and there will be negotiation associated with best value. So, we are looking at it for best value.
Okay. And I don't know if this falls under your domain or not, but do you have any status as to where one, is it called One Philly or that, that new system? You know where that stands?
So, Charlie Brennan. Everybody's leaving me.
Charlie Brennan, I'm the CIO. Within the last couple of weeks, we've had some developments in One Philly that have hit the news. As you know, Councilwoman, we've always been concerned about the financial solvency of the vendor that we had, and that vendor just declared Chapter 11.
The vendor declared Chapter 11?
I'm sorry.
Or the vendor declared Chapter 11?
Yes, cyber, cyber declared Chapter 11. The, so, so right now, we are following a plan that we laid out to kind of move in a different direction. But at the same time, some reports have come out about the company that may purchase them. There's a, there's a large worldwide company, and it's been in a paper, they call it a stalking, stalking horse bid, where the bankruptcy judge apparently lets one vendor give an initial bid. And the vendor, again, appeared in a paper, they're called Capgemini. They're a very large worldwide firm, 180,000 employees, over 16,000 in North America. Later on in May, there'll be an auction for cyber's assets in North America and India. The, Capgemini has put a preliminary bid in of $50 million for the company. That doesn't mean they'll get it, so we have to wait till after the bid. So, we, we are kind of looking at this also to see what, what develops.
Let me ask you a question. Were we able to obtain from them any information that they had on their computers? So, at least we have the information, or did we lose that work?
No. And that's a really good question. We, we actually hired a, a company now, and the company is dealing with cyber now to catalog everything that we own as a city. And part of our agreement with them, when we break off from them, is that, is that we would own everything that, that we, actually, we've actually laid out a plan where we will own all the code and all the policies and procedures to a certain point. And the idea is to let, let another vendor kind of take over from that point. That's where we're going right now.
How much have we invested in this project?
I think, don't hold me to this, I think it's about 18 million.
18 million dollars?
Yeah.
And how much do we anticipate losing?
Well, right now, we don't anticipate losing anything because we really don't have much of a choice other than to move forward here. We're, we're really in a pickle of that payroll.
Yeah, but we, we invested in a company that went Chapter 11.
Right.
You don't think there's any loss there?
Well, not if we, not if we can own all the work and all the work. Part of what the company, we hired them to do, is to assess the quality of the code and the work that they've done so far. So, we think within the next, say, 60 days or so, we'll have that report back. And if the report comes back favorable, is that we would, we would own everything that they've done over the last couple of years. So, I really couldn't tell you whether we've lost everything or not. If that report comes back and says everything's lousy, I would agree with you, but we don't know that yet.
Okay. So, in this case, I don't know the background or the history, but it seems to me that we may have been better served if the administration, for example, created a department of two or three people, which is some of these attorneys as an example, who are the unbelievably good negotiators, unbelievably good at doing due diligence on companies that we contract with, making sure they're solvent, making sure they have the necessary resources to complete contracts. I mean, you would do this in the private sector.
Yeah.
And so, it disturbs me that we're getting involved in companies that, you know, go Chapter 11. I know that's always a risk, but I wonder what the level of due diligence was in order to select them in the beginning.
You know, the only thing I could tell you is that, that the company was much better off when the project started. Their stock price was much higher. And as we kind of moved forward with the company, we saw the stock price started to sink. I think it got down to almost 20 cents a share. It was, it was, of course, much higher when they started. And cyber actually has been around for, for many, many years. They have a, they have a very large base of, of clients, which is one of the reasons I think makes them attractive to another company. You know, it's a lot of companies want to buy into, to, to North America. So, cyber really does have a lot of systems here in the United States. So, I, you know, I can't go back and see what people did in the past, but I would say that they, it probably looked better in the past, of course, than it does now.
Are we preventing what happened with this cyber situation from happening with other contracts that we enter into in suppliers? Have we put any kind of mechanism in place to prevent this from happening again?
I know that for, for the contracts that we let out now, we actually do a background on the company now to make sure that they're, you know, a viable company. I'm not sure it always, you know, it's, it always works out that way, especially since we go for years when we implement stuff. But I think we're trying to do the due diligence now ahead of time to make sure the company's going to stick around. Because it's not only, it's not only buying the product, it's the long-term support for the product. And we usually use the company to do that, especially if it's proprietary software.
I mean, if this was in, in the private sector, and this was your money, and you entered into a contract with somebody who went bankrupt after investing 18 million dollars, you'd be furious.
Yes.
And so, in some ways, how do you instill that feeling in government? Because that's what we're missing.
Yeah. And you know, I, I don't, all I could say is that when we, when we do enter into a contract, we do look at the, you know, the viability of the company. And don't forget, and even in the case of cyber, you know, they end up going bankrupt, and if, if the new company takes over, sometimes we're better off. You know, you know, sometimes that the new company brings in better management, more skills, better resources. The, the problem that we saw with cyber was, they, it's almost like the employees knew because they started to peel off from this. And this was a, a red flag to us because we started to lose the leads to all the, all the areas that, that One Philly needs, you know, for payroll and for pensions and for HR, is that the, those people started to leave the company. So, you know, that was a real flag to us to say, uh-oh, besides losing the stock price, all the people are bailing out, too. So, I, I think if, you know, as much as we can do due diligence for the companies that we contract with, that, that we're doing that now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions for the CIO? Okay. Thank you, members. Thank you for your testimony today.